From up from, yeah, I already, yeah, why is there, is there something?
She has to recuse, you have to recuse yourself for business.
Oh, I'm not feeling that amazing.
But just those two.
Yes.
So if you take me out of those two, do those first.
Yeah, because there's like a but, there's a handful in here, so it'd be, I mean, I can do it separately, but it's easier.
Meeting call to order. Today is Tuesday, November seventh. It is now six oh two P M. Town council meeting, the town council chambers, eleven seventy Main Street, West Forward, Rhode Island. Kay, we lead us in Korea.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in a meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of community. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Roll call, Councilman Luchardi.
Yeah.
Councilman Messier.
Here.
Councilman Borger.
Here.
Council Vice President Williamson.
Here.
Council President Goslin.
Here.
Forum is declared. Presentation by the school department regarding space needs and expansion of building committee.
Council President, well, the superintendent comes up. I just keep you informed that I spoke to the superintendent recently to start a conversation. I don't want to steal any of her thunder, but basically the conversation will revolve around space needs for our school department, around Department of Education's funding programs and offerings, and the rigid timeline that she'll lay forward on how we can progress to maximize the benefits for our community.
Thank you.
Evening, Karen.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, whenever you're ready. Nice to see everybody. Thanks for having us on your agenda.
You might introduce your sidekick, because not everyone knows. Okay, all right.
I'm sorry. I always assume people know. This is Chris Mann. He's our Director of Property Services and Transportation, and will be instrumental in what we're about to talk to about tonight. So what we want to talk about tonight is a very short presentation. As we've talked about several times over the last couple of years, our space needs in the district have been increasing. Our schools are maxed out. As we've also mentioned, you know, we've done as much as we can with the space we have. If you've been in the schools, you'll see our media centers have shrunk. You know, we've built walls and smaller classrooms for small reading classes or resource classes. So we're at the point in time where we're going to need to consider more space on a serious note. So tonight, we just wanted to open up the conversation. This is a very preliminary, high level, just overview of the ride capital improve, five-year capital improvement plot process plan, and what we as a school district and a town need to consider as next steps.
Karen, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
What, what does maxed out mean?
You have some, yeah.
Sure, yeah.
She has the presentation, I think, in person.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's okay. That's okay. So, yeah, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Sarah, whenever you're ready. So the first slide just highlights the four topics I'm going to touch on tonight while we're here. We need to enter into a new five-year capital improvement plan with the Department of Ed. Very briefly discuss our current enrollment. The next steps will be to give you, again, just a very high overview of the ride five-year process, five-year plan process with the Department of Ed and a short timeline for the work that's ahead. Over here. So why we're here, just like I just mentioned, is that our school buildings are over capacity and we will need more space, as it is to Jason's credit point in question. We're maxed out, meaning we're out of space for any additional classrooms or student programs or enrollment. We know that in 2020, we will have mandatory pre-K, which means, and this is where we started with the conversation within the last couple of years, we know we're going to need that more space at least for the influx of pre-K kids. Our current pre-K numbers are quickly increasing. And that has to, that's, there's a lot behind that. That's the, um, because of early intervention, they got behind when COVID happened. Now they're catching up now. A lot of kids at the pre-K age are servicing that with need, are surfacing that have needs. So this year, we have an increased projection of seventy kids that we weren't anticipating. Our special education population continues to increase, and as always, we're looking for equity in student opportunities in all of our schools at all levels. So as part of this process, what we'll need to do is that we will need to enter into a new five-year capital improvement plan in process with the Department of Ed. In this process, we'll ensure that we meet the needs of our students. It will involve an educational and facility audit. It is a five-stage process that will will be a transparent partnership between the town council and the school department. And all decisions will be data and fact based. So the next section, we just want to give a quick overview, the current overview of the schools and what each school looks like. So this next graphic tells you what our current enrollment in each school is. Green Bush School is at four hundred and forty-seven students. Oregon, four hundred and eighty-seven. Wakefield Hills, three hundred and ninety-eight. Maisy Quinn total, including the pre-K program and our alternative middle school and high school programs are at one fifty, is at one fifty-seven. Daring Middle School is one thousand forty-nine, and the high school is one thousand seventy-five students. For the middle school and high school, those are big numbers for schools, but the elementary schools in particular, those are, those are big elementary schools. We, um, average in the state is probably two fifty to three hundred students. So these are big, these are big elementary schools. Here, the next slide shows a nice graphic of the square footage per ride and school requirements, and that our facilities are an average of fourteen percent over capacity. So if you look at the chart, the light blue line indicates our current enrollment, and the darker blue line indicates the ride square footage per student. So this shows us that four of six of our schools are over the ride requirement for square footage per student. So those last few slides show, again, this is a very high-level overview of the needs of our buildings and the need to consider new school and new school construction. This slide and the following slide, it's little tiny print, so it might be hard for folks in the audience to see, but the, the bar in the middle, this is a graphic that outlines the five stages in the process. Stage one, and on the top level, it says, uh, it indicates local approvals. And on the bottom of the middle line, it indicates state approvals, and along each stage, the local approvals and the state approvals for each section. So stage one is to identify the need. Stage two is to develop a solution. So the need, again, is that we have increased enrollment, we have to prepare for mandatory pre-K. Our schools don't have any more room in them, so there's the, the basic need. So stage two is to develop, to develop a solution. So what does that mean? What is the answer? What, what school should it be? Where should it be? All of those decisions are still yet to be, to be made. Stage three is the design review. And stage four is construction. And the last stage five is the project completion. And the very last slide, again, just gives the beginning timeline for these five stages. So this is the important, one of the most important parts about the conversation tonight is our first deadline for stage one is February fifteenth of twenty twenty-four. So the upcoming February. So stage one is the identification of need, and that involves, um, we have to write a letter to Ride to indicate the need and what our intentions are to abide by the, all of the regulations and laws and introduce our building, school building committee, which is a joint committee of members of the school department and the town. And then, once we pass stage one, then we jump right into stage two, and that's the development of the solution. In other words, what is the new building going to be? Where is it going to be? What students will it house? You know, there's a lot of, a lot of things to consider. Feasibility, part of stage one is a feasibility study to determine where, you know, where, when and how we can, we can build a building in town. And then that's, deadline is September fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. So we have from February to September for stage two. And then stage three is the design review, once we've identified where and what school or what building will be built, then the design is made, and then that review goes off to Ride, and that's basically a year from this December. So we've got one year to do all that. And then stage four is the construction and the funding. And stage five is the reimbursement and commissioning phase. In other words, that's when the building's complete. And very importantly to this whole conversation is that we are eligible for sixty-seven percent reimbursement. If we follow this process and every stage is, is approved by Ride, we're actually eligible for a potential up to twenty percent more if we meet certain, Chris, if I'm right, it's mostly energy.
Yeah.
Do you want to speak to that?
There's some energy standards, there's some MBE standards. There's number of students affected and community impact. So Ride has a series of different things that you can achieve, five percent per goal.
On top of the sixty-seven.
On top of the sixty-seven, yes.
It could be up to eighty-seven percent. That's huge.
So that's, that is essentially, like I said, the intention for tonight was just to be a very high-level, broad overview of where we're at, that there is a need for, um, you know, more building space. All of that still be determined, and now the, the, uh, building committee will, will, that will be the charge of the building committee. Lot goes into that, the feasibility studies. As I mentioned, there is an educational and facilities audit that will happen. So, um, again, with a short timeframe of February fifteenth for stage one, we wanted to come tonight to basically kick off this conversation and, and ask the town council to consider next steps in terms of, uh, school building committee.
Is it, maybe it's too early to ask this? Is this like a new school? Is this additions to the schools we have? Is it a combination of both possibly?
It, and that's exactly the charge of the building committee to determine all of that. Where is there space to build? You know, a lot of, you know, feasibility studies have to go into that, traffic studies have to go into that. It's not as simple as, there might be space behind school B. That'd be a good place. Maybe not. That could be the worst place. So this, it could be an addition. It could be a smaller building. It could be lots of options to think about.
Karen, what, what is your, um, target date for a move-in? Because that would be after five.
Yes, so stages four and five all are, are completely dependent on stages one, two and three. In other words, what does the committee decide should be built? Where is it going to be built? We know it, it's hard to pinpoint a time, but we know it's.
So if you're looking at design review by December twenty twenty-four. Obviously, it's most likely not going to happen in a year.
No.
Are you looking at for school year twenty twenty-six?
I would, I would anticipate that, again, this is just not based on anything, um, at least two years, probably maybe into a third year. Based on nothing, just what I've seen in other districts, you know, a lot of, a lot of districts are, um, building the reimbursement bonuses. So a lot of districts are doing construction right now. So when I listen to other districts and what their processes and timelines, is that going to happen overnight? You know that.
One more question. Based on like, all right, so say we're two to three years out from a completion and all the, all the process has to go on. Looking at the chart and kind of knowing, you know, being up here at different developments going in, which most likely will have children coming in, um, and you're already over capacity. What I meant by my first question, over capacity, does that, like, I'm taking it literal.
Yeah.
Like, if you can fit five hundred in, in a building, we're at four ninety-nine.
Right.
How, how close are?
It, it's.
Or what do you do if, if you're?
Well, yeah, then we just have to make some tougher decisions about the space we do have. What open space do we have to, um, it, to use? Again, I use media centers as a, a good example because they're open space that you can make into smaller spaces. We have to think about programming, you know, a lot of, we have a lot of therapeutic programs where we're able to, our students with special needs are able to stay in the district versus go to not a district placement. We might need to consider where those are, um, rearrange some of those programs, maybe, you know, just continue to be creative.
I'm sure you have the same, like this room has a capacity from the fire department. I'm sure you have the same thing within your schools as well. So there is going to be a certain number. Once you hit it, you can't go beyond.
Oh, yeah. No, we, we are always in, in compliance with fire code. Um, that's not even.
I'm only mainly saying that to reinforce what Jay's saying, because a lot of these developments that want to come in and bring more students into the, into the community, you know, it's something that has to be considered.
Yeah, and that's another factor.
It is, it's a huge factor, which, which doesn't really sometimes come into play.
So there might be some temporary needs that you will have between now and twenty, twenty twenty-eight. Is it September or the class of twenty twenty-eight?
FY twenty twenty-eight, so twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
And, and do you, I assume a lot of those pre-K numbers are up because it's less expensive than childcare. I mean.
Well, it's kids, the pre-K, the, the kids we service now are, are students, for the most part, are students that have gone through early intervention, and they've been identified with, um, special needs, developmentally special needs, for the most part. A lot of it is kids who need speech, so they'll enter early intervention and to our pre-K program for services. And then most of the kids that qualify under speech, by the time they get to first, second grade, they, they, um, you know, exit that service. They're just a little behind. And I, I know sometimes people don't want to hear it's, you know, fallout of COVID, but it really is with kids at that age. They were home, they wore masks, they didn't have the same experience learning to speak, listening to people, like, you know, so this is, this is definitely a byproduct of that, that point in time. So, um.
Regulations that should not have gone as long as they had, in my opinion. Uh, but one of the other things with the, the pre-K, because I saw the word mandatory in there, you, the states have once again forcing stuff on communities that we probably can't handle, and I have, that's one of my issues with this state. So I just wanted to throw that out there as a topic.
It's, and again, every, yeah, every state in the district is, is faced with this, and, um, we're all trying to figure it out.
So some of the questions you guys have, when we have the educational facilities, studies done in stage one, we'll help answer some of those questions.
So who does that?
That's done by outside agency. So you'll hire an educational expert to come in and do those studies, the same as we did in the previous five-year plans.
So someone that Ride has to approve?
There, um, I don't know that they, I don't think they have to approve it, but there are lists of people. We've worked with people.
Okay.
We've worked with people that have helped us with projects like the gearing, the, um, innovative learning classrooms in gearing. We've worked with an educational consultant. We, we've already worked with people that we could pull from.
And, and they will be, I would hate to see us work with someone, have, or I'd not be happy, and then say, oh, you know what, that sixty-seven percent just went to forty percent or something. I mean, so we want to make sure that they're happy along the way.
That, that's a really good example. That project was a facility equity initiative, and all Ride, that was a grant through Ride. So that was, everything we did was approved by Ride. We have project managers, we've worked with all that, the committee will, will consider and.
I'd also recommend that, um, there will be the school building committee, but if the council agrees, maybe a quarterly or every, however often we think is appropriate, a joint school department, school committee and town council meeting to discuss.
Absolutely.
So even though there's, there's a, a core committee that, you know, there'll be an opportunity to bring everybody up, to keep everybody up to speed and, uh, you know.
Yeah, I mean, rather than quarterly, I think it's when you guys think it's necessary, which could be more often, could be less often.
That's right. Yeah.
Depending on time in the product timeline of the project.
Is there any money that is put aside? I know you talked about reimbursement and at six, possible sixty-seven percent, but startup, startup money? Do you, is there any money that you guys had planned for this?
Well, we don't have any, any funds that we were specifically planning for this. You know, the, the surplus money we have has been, as we've been using it for some of our smaller capital improvement projects and emergencies, it wouldn't.
So there's not?
Not. I guess to answer your question, no.
Okay. Okay.
But Ride does have, and I'm not sure, um, Chris, I don't know if you know, but the pay-as-you-go, um, is part of some, some initiatives.
Yeah, the, but so, I don't know if this will fall under pay-to-go, uh, never gone through this process in, in this respect, so we'll see if that will qualify. I know that the sixty-seven percent is a guarantee. That's based on your free and reduced lunch. That number is, is a lot. The other twenty percent is based on whatever initiatives they're offering at the time. So right now, I know it's MBE. There's some energy ones, if you're meeting enough green energy, if you're servicing greater than fifty percent of your population, how does it affect the town and the community? So those, those change yearly.
Okay. Yeah, we've been really successful in the past in smaller projects, meeting those bonuses, so.
So the sixty-seven is the max?
No, for West Warwick, it's a guarantee.
So it's, but, but if our free and reduced lunch happens to go up between now as this project goes up, will that also go up?
As our, yeah, as our F Y rate changes.
Okay.
So a minute, we're.
We're locked at sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven percent reimbursement.
Yeah, all right.
So for them, for the town's perspective, I'll be reaching out to the superintendent as early as tomorrow to identify the construction of the building committee and start talking about potentially, you know, who and how many and supplement the small group that we already meet with biannually.
Sounds like something we need to do. Thank you.
I'm going to put this in there just because in my little hot ticket up in Green Bush, I'm hoping that this committee can also look at the parking situation there because it still needs to be fixed. It's still a nightmare over there. Just had to throw that.
So we don't want the addition to go on Green Bush as well.
Exactly, exactly.
I think that's one question we can answer now.
Don't need an audit for that, no.
Parking line is still.
Karen, Chris, thank you. Do you have any questions for Karen?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate the time again, and we look forward to this project.
And thank you, and thank the school committee for the good relationship between the two bodies, because it hasn't always been that way. We really do appreciate it.
Yeah, and we, as we know, that's the best way to operate, and so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Consent agenda, approval of the minutes from the October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three regular town council meeting, and approval of request from the tax assessor for cancellation of taxes in the amount of eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and forty cents.
Move a pool of the consent agenda.
Second, moving second, any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Ordinances, first reading of request from sixty E Main Street LLC for tax stabilization development agreement for the remodeling, modernizing of an industrial mill building located at fifty-four sixty East Main Street and further designated as assessor's plat eighteen lot sixty-one.
I think we have representation for the project.
Uh, good evening, Council President, members of the town council. Uh, as some of you know, I'm Alan Fung, and I'm here representing, uh, my client, Brandon Havener and sixty E Main LLC. And we're here tonight to ask for your support on ordinance number one, uh, which is on the agenda, uh, for first reading as well as the attached tax stabilization agreement, uh, which outlines the stabilized payments in exhibit E, which, we had negotiated and had discussions with the tax assessor and certain members of the town, um, as we come before you tonight. As some of you are aware, my client had come previously, uh, before you, um, with a proposal, uh, relating to the project. But we're back tonight with the more formalized, uh, agreement that is, uh, presented, uh, for your consideration. But before I begin, I want to take a moment to thank all the individuals within the town that have had the opportunity to assist Mr. Havener, myself, as we negotiated this, uh, through. And, you know, tonight, we are asking for a six-year tax stabilization agreement, um, you know, for his project, which entails the remodeling, modernizing and reutilizing of an abandoned, uh, blighted industrial mill property as he's converting it into a mixed use of commercial as well as, uh, some residential apartment units, which are a combination of market rate and some affordable within, uh, those units. Now, you know, I want to touch upon, as you know, the legal authority of the town to enter this agreement because, you know, my client is an eligible entity, uh, within the town's ordinances, particularly eighteen sixty-one. As sixty East Main LLC is the property owner of an industrial mill, uh, property and falls within that context where it will be remodeling and modernizing that existing building, which will substantially increase, uh, its total assessed value. Now, we stayed within the context of, uh, that framework with the six-year agreement. But most importantly, what this also, uh, further enhances and satisfies is, uh, state law too. Under Renalan General Laws forty-four, three, nine, which provides for exemptions or stabilizing of taxes on properties used for manufacturing, commercial or residential purposes. This, uh, proposed ordinance and agreement would fall under section A one subsection two, which allows for the granting of an exemption or stabilization of taxes that will inert to the benefit of the town by reason of the willingness of a commercial or residential firm or property owner to replace, reconstruct, convert or remodel existing buildings resulting in an increase in residential housing or commercial building investment by the firm or property owner, uh, to this town. And here with the project and, uh, Mr. Havener has a couple of, uh, concepts that he'd like to show you, uh, and members of the council. It will be converting that abandoned blighted property into, um, you know, the loss, uh, at that location. So as you can see, it's really increasing, enhancing the value, and he's looking to, um, and here's the second part of that, uh, building. Now, so, uh, under this agreement, you know, the town would be getting that re, uh, modernized, reutilized, mixed-use property from a mill building that sat abandoned and blighted. So, you know, the first consideration for the town is that it will get enhanced property values, uh, from that, and you will see that, um, because within the schedule, it outlines what it is currently, you know, assessed at, and what you will see it at, at the end of that property life, which is a projected six hundred eighty-seven thousand nine hundred ninety-nine, ninety-five dollar building value at the end. You will also get increased property taxes from it. And most importantly, you know, as we were talking about, uh, throughout the state, you're seeing a lack of housing hitting every community from West Ward, Cranston, every community throughout the state. You know, you're adding some much-needed housing stock. There's a commercial component as well that's going to be added to it, and, you know, hopefully that you will agree that this stabilization agreement, becomes a win-win for the community, uh, as well as my client, because it provides stability for both fronts, where, you know, he gets the benefit of those stabilized tax payments under that six-year freeze. And, and again, the town during the construction period will not be losing any dollars because we're locked in under that construction period at the values and the taxes that he is locked in currently. So, you know, obviously, there's an incentive to try to, you know, get this project up and running as quickly as possible to convert it into, from that industrial into that mixed use of residential and commercial. So for all these reasons, we're here tonight to ask for your support of the agreement as well as support for that ordinance, uh, especially on this first reading. And we'd be happy to get any questions from anyone.
If I'm reading this correctly, it looks like we do lose a little bit of money in the beginning, because starting out at thirty-one, thirty-seven for the tax rate, going down to twenty-seven, forty-one, that's dropping us from eighty-nine hundred dollars a year to seventy-seven hundred, almost seventy-eight hundred dollars a year. So we're losing money in the beginning. So how does, how does that factor?
Because it goes in from, uh, current. Because it goes in from, uh, currently it's an industrial mill property and he's converting it into a residential, you know, component which has a different tax rate.
And I understand that, but at the same time, it's still a commercial building until it gets his certificate of occupancy, correct?
It's an industrial bill, so it's staying in as an industrial.
At the industrial rate, not the, uh, not the residential.
That's correct. And that's the construction period. So for the construction period, he is staying at that industrial rate.
It's not what it says on here.
No, I, I exhibit B, if you take a look at exhibit B.
Yeah, I, I think what, and I agree with Mark. So year one, um, you have the construction period and it's eighty-nine, eighteen, forty-nine is the tax amount. In year one, it is reduced. I would have a hard time accepting any reduction in, in current taxes. Uh, it goes to seventy-seven, ninety-two, sixty-six for three years. I, I would struggle with that. I mean, why would we want to have less money coming in? Um, well, this, that, that makes no sense as far as I'm concerned and I understand. And he was here and I appreciate you coming back. You came originally with a ten-year plan and we asked you to go back with a five and I'm sure you know, there's been a whole lot of conversation in the last, uh, several meetings about what ordinance we have on the books now in six years. That being said, I, I would tend to agree with Mark. I, it would be hard for me to approve something where we're going to get less money anytime during this project.
Respectfully, I think what the whole purpose of any type of stabilization agreement is you're getting the benefit of dollars being invested by my client to convert that property, which is, you know, sat vacant and bladed for years now. And I, I think in fact, at a certain point in time, they had, you know, homeless that had broken in and everything and he's putting the dollars in.
At the end of the day, but again, in year one, we would have to find eleven hundred plus dollars more tax somewhere else. And I'm not sure we would want to do that. The other thing I would suggest with the schedule is the final year says seven year plus. We're not committing to any plus.
No, it's not. No, but that's just after and that means you're getting a hundred percent, whatever that rate is.
Well, no, that's not what it says. It actually says that that will be the number for seven years plus. So I would modify that and make it clear.
We can modify that. But with all due respect on the, once they convert it into a residential, uh, and commercial, you're taxed at that residential and commercial rate. So what we're asking for is the increase on the dollars, um, at that commercial and, you know, residential rate, which you're going to have a drop no matter what because it's going from the industrial to that lower classification.
And, and I understand that, but it's still a commercial until it gets a certificate of occupancy, correct?
Yeah, but see.
No, no, it's, it's actually.
Period. So I understand this. So the construction period means they start the construction today. They get their C O, let's say two years. Let's say you might take two years. The whole construction period, they're going to be getting thirty-one, thirty-seven. Once they get their C O, year one, two, three, four, five and six kick in. And that's when they get the new tax rate of twenty-seven, forty-two.
That's great with the rate. I'm talking about the tax dollars. I, I, I don't really care what rate you talk about. I think you need to change it. So it's going to be eighty, eighty-nine, eighteen is the least we're going to get for the first four years of the, that, that's.
One thing to note on those two properties. So when I took ownership and really kind of started the informal construction period, the, the total tax value of the two buildings was only four thousand dollars. So in the reassessment in twenty twenty-two, that more than doubled.
That has happened to a lot of places. Yep.
Uh, so it has already shown an increase since we started the project. Based into, uh, consideration, but prior to acquisition, it was about a thousand dollar tax.
As you know, that, that's something that's happened townwide.
How many, how many bedrooms are going in these units?
Uh, there's eight two bedrooms and then two one.
So potentially more children coming in? You just heard the discussion that we just had.
So the plan for the marketing of the building is more like, um, work from home, young professional type of setup where you have no children, families where they need a home office. Efficiency, that's kind of the approach that we take.
I'm all for the enhancement. Um, I'm, I'm gonna go a little bit off topic here, staying on the same topic with Tim. Um, we, we, two weeks, so two weeks ago, we had, um, this come be another, uh, business come before us. We got into the, the conversation of redeveloping some of this ordinance. And this just happened, you just happened to come before us before we had a chance to do anything. So I actually had talked to Sal about, I don't feel comfortable, you're asking for six years. Me saying, you know what? I don't agree with that. I'm gonna go four. I have no rhyme or reason for it. But I don't feel comfortable being in that position. Um, so I talked to Sal and we talked a little bit about making this, um, having to do with numbers, where you're going to spend so much and that should be your stacks, your tax stabilization should be based on that. Um, I have nothing in front of me. Um, I wanted to talk to Sal a little bit more before I brought anything up to the council. I'd still like to do that. I'm not against the enhancement of any property. I'm, I'm not against the tax stabilization. I just like to have that. That, and maybe it's me, just that checkbox, that pigeonhole system where you would fit in, you're asking for this and you fit into this, this way. So then in the next business that would come up and want to do the same thing, they might, might not fit into a six-year. It might be a four-year based on the amount of money they spent. I don't know if this is appropriate for this topic right here, but I don't feel comfortable moving forward with this until I have something else in front of me.
You're talking about a substantive issue that they have before you versus a procedural issue that the council is still going to debate into the future. So you really can't. I mean, you can, they're gonna, it's gonna mix a little bit. There's gonna be some crossover, but it's really apples and oranges right now.
So I, I can agree with that, Jay, but the problem I have is right now, this is following our current ordinance. And if they didn't come before us, this is their first time ever coming before us, I could agree with you wholeheartedly. But they came before us, we pushed back because they came with a ten-year. We said, come back with a five-year. I mean, I've had some conversations with Brandon over the past couple of months, um, via email, just going back and forth. And he's thrown out ideas and I shot down most of his ideas. You know, I said, come back with the ordinance. I told him, read, uh, listen to the last meeting. Pay attention at the last meeting, watch it because a lot's going to be going on that night. And I want to make sure that before he comes before us again, that they're following our ordinance. So we don't have to keep, I mean, push them away. This is going on a year. It's been going on. You've been starting to try to get this moving for a couple of years. And I hate to see this push off even further for him when it is, let's get it moving before he walks away and it becomes another blighted area once, once again too. So.
So you're coming with a six, but we asked you to come back with a five. That's my only issue.
The five was even more different. We, we said, come back with a five. No matter which way you look at it, come back with a five up to a hundred percent on your fifth year. And we even said, we didn't care if you came back one, two and three with zero, four and five were sixty and a hundred. As long as by the fifth year, you're at a hundred. This is a little more lenient, uh, to, in a little less unfavorable for his group. It's actually more money than what we actually told him to come back with last time. So that's why I, I asked him to make sure we're following the ordinance, make sure that, because I feel comfortable with the ordinance we have. And because they've come before us now, like again, if they didn't come before us, I would not be entertaining this tonight. I would have said, let's wait till we get everything squared away. But they've come before us once or twice now. So.
And, and I agree that we should consider this because they were here before us and, and none of us knew about the six-year ordinance when, when they came in the first time. So, but, but I'm, I'm gonna be honest with you. I'm still gonna struggle. If you want to keep the rate at twenty-seven, forty-one, that's good, but the value has to go up. I can't see us accepting less than the eighty-nine, eighteen, forty-nine that we have on the books and are receiving every year right now.
Because the tax rate's gonna go up and we're, it's, you're gonna be frozen. So it's not just the eleven hundred dollars that we're looking at at the moment. It's more as time goes on, you know?
Again, we said zero, you can come with a zero percent increase. Zero percent increase would be eight thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-nine cents.
Can I make a suggestion then?
You, you may, absolutely, but.
Would the, you know, council be amenable, say, if we worked off the eighty-nine something, but have it flat at a longer period of time so that it could work for, um, you know, so zeros at that rate. So, because financially, he's gonna have to be able to have that ability upfront to invest the capital and make those investments, uh, for, to develop this project. He is going to be investing significant dollars into that project. That's why with a lot of stabilization agreement, not just the one now, but a lot of the ones that are done, it's the upfront, you know, stabilization period that helps with those, uh, initial dollar values.
So let me ask you this question. We're talking about roughly thirty-three hundred dollars total in your project. How big is this project and how much money are you spending on this project?
So it's still being kind of fine tuned, but it's between two and a half.
Two and a half to three million and we're talking about thirty-three hundred dollar further expense.
But, but I'm also.
I don't want to be, I mean, doesn't, it sounds like peanuts in a project that size, correct? So I'm just wondering, you know, if we kept the first three years of eighty-nine, eighteen.
The truth is, I, I'm just throwing it out, but you just, you just made a red flag go up. You're spending two and a half million dollars, but you have a value of six eighty-seven.
It actually.
I will, I will struggle with that a little bit. So, yes.
It's, and we justified that with Sal because we've showed the pro forma in confidence. We shared those confidential numbers. It all deals with the capitalization rates, um, how much you're projecting as far as tenancy. So all that, you know, that dollar we did show to Sal because it's not just the investment of the dollars that you're putting in. It's, you know, when you're making a determination of building value and assessed value, it's based upon all of those factors, which we can, you know.
So, so I, again, I would be comfortable if you were to have seventy, eighty, eighty-nine, eighteen for the first one, two, three years. Four and made it a four-year. I mean, I can't see kicking in less tax money in any year.
Totally understand.
So you want us to change the value? I was gonna say, if you look at, if you look at that. Well, if you look at that, what she just offered, one, two, three and four.
Right.
If you take the ten, five.
That's right. You, you're meeting.
We're meeting halfway. You're getting twenty-five hundred dollars. I'm just throwing out quick numbers, twenty, twenty-eight hundred dollars. So, and thirty-three hundred up front, twenty-eight in the back. So you're down five hundred bucks in a project this big.
Because as I said to you last time, I'm not in favor of these going to residential places at all. You know, that's my personal opinion because of the different, uh, effects on the town from residential compared to a regular business. I'm all for business. I will give the tax stabilization to a business no matter what, but residents, you just heard from our school committee, uh, I'm sorry, superintendent, the, the situation of our schools and to even have a chance that even one more student comes in. Is, how much is per student on average? Eighteen thousand. So, I mean, we're losing, you know, and then another eighteen thousand for, minimum for a student. You know, so that's where I struggle with even giving a tax stabilization on this.
But, uh, with that, with those amendments, I, if it's okay, I can work with, um, Sal, the assessor to kind of rework those numbers. If we can do that in the fourth year at that, so that you're not losing money and then just kind of work it the rest of the way through. And, uh, council vice president, I understand what you're saying about that. I'll take off that line and just say, you're seven, a hundred percent. That way.
Whatever, whatever the rate is, it is.
I see the way you wrote it. I understand it, but I don't see how it could be read in another way.
And I agree.
Six years from now, somebody's saying, no, this is what it is when the tax rate's not.
And I'll just put in a line, a hundred percent at year seven plus.
Yes, that's fine. And, and I guess, I guess I would ask that because in my head it's six years. So Sal, maybe that's a question for you or, or Al. Is it six years or is it seven years? Because this actually really goes, you don't get the hundred percent until the seventh year on this.
At the end of six, so it would be the beginning of seven.
Okay, alright. Okay, that's fine. Yeah, so I, again, I.
I'll make that adjustment on this guy.
Whether you bring the value up to three twenty-five, five or whatever it is and leave the rate however you want to do that, that's up to you.
We can work.
So this is the first reading. I, I would say make a motion to pass with future amendments for the next reading. So they can work on the dollar amounts. Does anybody have?
Can we do that?
Yes.
As long as they're gonna be approved. I mean, so if whatever they refile and you guys get it beforehand, there's not going to be any more negotiating of that. So it has to be acceptable. So it has to be with the approved amendments. So you could pass it with the future approved amendments as discussed tonight.
Any questions for Brandon or Alan? Kind of weird calling you by your first name.
So I would make, I would. Do you have a motion on four? I don't think so.
We had a motion.
We've discussed, we've discussed the amendments for years, one, two, three.
It was never a motion. It was just they were introduced. So I would make a motion that we approve the exhibit B as amended, as we discussed, where the tax amount will never be less than what it is currently now.
Right. For the first four years and then we'll, year seven, I'll make that amendment.
I second with amendments. Second, any other discussion from the council? Any public discussion on this ordinance? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Jay?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Mark?
I'll say yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Congratulations and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
First reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five, amending appendix C, traffic ordinances, handicap parking on Sunset Avenue.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Al?
This is a request that came from the priest at, uh, Saint Anthony's for two handicap spots. Uh, the traffic committee met, they approved it. Uh, the police department, I believe where they met with the priest. They went down, they measured off the location where they were proper and that's what the ordinance is based on. Uh, from the intersection of Sunset and Maple, a hundred and fifty feet up, there's going to be two handicap parking and it's just from the first parking space. It's just west of the handicapped access. So it's something that is, you know, I think very well needed.
The parking situation over there really bad at this time or is it?
So their, their church is separate from the parking lots. So, um, when, when father reached out to me. Yeah, so their, their two parking lots are across the street. They, they actually bought a house, the old rectory knocked that down. And also, um, they got the main parking lot, but it's again, across the street. So, yeah, they have had an increase of handicap, um, version. So he asked if, if, what he can do and I brought it before the traffic committee.
Traffic was, no one had any problems with it. And the, the matter of fact, uh, I know that, I'm pretty sure Chief Barone, I know, uh, Major Blaise, a number of officials went out and actually looked at it for the, for the location that it was chosen.
Any other comments? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Jay?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eighteen, amending section three definitions and section five use regulations.
Move approval of the ordinance.
Second.
Moving second.
This is an ordinance to allow us to have, uh, self-storage units provisioned in there. Absolutely no residential use to be made of them. Uh, over the past several years, we've had a number of requests for self-storage, which unfortunately I've had to say, well, we don't have it in our ordinance. What has transpired over the last several years is each of these requests are coming in had bigger and much more valuable. And if you look around now, I know there's one, uh, just before the Rotary on Route Four. The multi-million dollar projects. And so this is, uh, you know, a, a business coming in that's, uh, non, non-traffic generating. It's, in my opinion, a very big, uh, tax producer for the town without any, and it's the, the way they're constructed, they're, they're not police demanding, they're not fire demanding. So I'm, I'm strongly in, in favor of this.
Any questions for Al? Any public comment on this ordinance? Hearing none, roll call vote. Jay?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
Liquor licenses, town council acting as the liquor commission. New class B V liquor license from Realist Kira LLC doing business as Cayente Mexican Grill.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, I think they're in the back. Thank you.
Welcome.
You've been approved.
Moving on to renewals, we have class A renewals, class B limited renewals, class B victual renewals, class D pub renewals and a class T renewal.
I need to recuse myself under class B victual uh number seven. I don't know how you want to take that out or you want to.
There's enough listed for all of them to try to recuse out of everything too, so.
Everybody's good, yeah, all right.
Make life easy.
So I'll make a motion to approve class A, class B, class B victual, class D and class T renewals.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion from the council? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, if you're here for any of those licenses, you've been approved. There's over a hundred on here, if you want me to read them all. That's all.
Moving on to the regular business license.
How do you want to do that by? Let's step out and then.
Which letter are we on?
On JJ.
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 Makes sense.
They're not on here, right?
Unless it's a discussion that comes up, I don't, I don't see any issue.
Hmm?
Unless it's like if somebody comes up with one of them, then we might have to separate that particular outfit discussion.
I'm just wondering if.
You're gonna do all of J?
Yeah. The record both council members recuse themselves. Do I have a motion for J? Do I have a J in a second?
I'll make the motion to approve all of letter J for license renewals.
Second.
Any public comment? Yeah, it's all under J, yeah. Any public comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, it's that time of year, all the license renewals.
Appointments and resignations, appointment of municipal court judge for a five-year term.
Sorry, got to catch up.
You're allowed to scroll in.
Yeah. Move, move approval of the appointment.
Second, moving second, Mark, you want to give an update?
Certainly, as you're all aware, we had a vacancy in our municipal court judge position due to the resignation of Norman Landrush Esquire upon his appointment. As a Rhode Island Traffic Tribunal magistrate. An interview panel consisting of human resource director Sherry Fournier, town clerk Sarah Repose and police chief Ernest Levine interviewed seven candidates within the past two weeks. The exceptional candidates came from various communities, including West Warwick, had a broad range of legal experiences. And appeared committed to providing fair, equitable and impartial treatment in judicial proceedings. The panel ultimately recommended, and I concurred, putting forth Veronica Assalone Esquire for consideration for appointment. Just a little background, she grew up in Coventry and spent a lot of time in West Warwick. In addition to local ties, she has served as a legal advisor to two municipalities and as a solicitor for planning and zoning. Allowing her to understand the roles, functions and responsibilities of local government. In her twenty-seven-year legal career, she has experience in civil, municipal and criminal law. She's the founder of a family law firm based in Warwick, which provides services to all demographics, including pro bono work. Attorney Assalone displayed excellent interpersonal skills, professional demeanor and a sincere dedication to fair, compassionate and impartial decision-making. I believe that attorney Assalone will represent West Warwick well and provide exceptional service as our municipal court judge. I had provided her letter of interest and resume for your review prior and she is out of state this evening. I believe she's joined us on Zoom from hopefully the sunny state of California.
Hold wait up. So I, I had the, the pleasure of, of speaking with attorney Assalone, um actually yesterday. And after reading the agenda and um I was the one who, who complained about that I felt a judge should be um involved in the Kent County area and, and she fits that bill. Um I don't know her at all, except for that fifteen-minute conversation in a billboard that I pass by every now and then um on Tyoke Avenue. But um, um I think that it was, and actually a very pleasant conversation and I think she'll be a great fit. And she'll be a positive representative for the town of West Warwick. So and she represents the Kent County area, so she knows the area. That was my only complaint last few meetings.
Um Veronica has come before previous councils here a few times, a couple of times pro bono like Mark had said. And that's when I, I actually met her, um really never had much conversation with her, but when she came, she came before us, she was very impressive, always professional. So, you know, I, I don't disagree with the appointment.
I, I agree as well, I think there was a couple of other qualified candidates as well. But I had a lengthy conversation with her um last week and she really impressed me and I think she'll do a fine job. And I spoke with several other individuals that know her better than I do and uh they agreed with my, my initial assessment, speaking with her.
I, I don't know the woman either, she has reached out, she sent an email, I have not gotten a chance to speak with her. But I have the utmost confidence in the, the group that interviewed her and um it was a unanimous decision, I feel very confident with that.
Well, what the council messiah said, I talked to other people who know her and she came highly recommended, so I did not call her back, I did return her email, but uh I, I don't have an issue with her. And billboards do work because I know exactly where that billboard is.
Hi Veronica, how are you?
Hi guys, I'm so sorry I can't be there in person tonight, uh do you hear me?
Yes, we can.
We certainly can, yeah.
Um I, I, I had this trip planned for a long time, I am on the west coast in Las Vegas actually with a, a, a traffic clerk judge. Where your cases are um appealed to sometimes, uh we're here uh with her mom, having a little bit of a girl's time. Um but I'm happy to be able to join you from Zoom and I'm happy to answer any questions or concerns that you have prior to the vote. And wanted to express my um commitment in um open communication and uh understanding the objectives of the council. And aligning the court um, um and the management of the court with those objectives. As it relates to housing issues and traffic issues and um animal violations, which are other things that are heard there.
Well, we, thank you for taking the time, if I were you, I'd be out doing something else probably, so. Yeah, and that's. Yes. We're voting to accept his recommendation, yes, yes.
Yeah, it's appointment for a five-year term.
Yep. Yes, Al?
I have never met Veronica, uh however, I have spoken with an attorney that I think you people know I hold in a great deal of respect and that's John Bernero. John knows Veronica and he and I, because I'll be appearing before her, John spoke extremely highly of her. And John's word is pretty good with me, so uh I would go along with John and hope that you see fit to appoint her.
Thank you. Any other questions for Veronica? I would just need a motion to.
Motion to approve Veronica Assalone as the new municipal court judge.
Second.
Moving seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, congratulations Veronica. Make sure you're here for the.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'll be there, I've been there uh the last two sessions actually uh sitting with John, so I'm, I'm ready to hit the road running and I thank you all very much for your trust.
And, and I'll put twenty dollars on twenty-seven.
I was gonna say, yeah.
You got it.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank.
Uh request from David Gapo for reappointment of the sewer use order review for term ending October twenty twenty-six.
Move approval of uh David Gapo's reappointment to the sewer use order review.
Second, moving second, any questions?
David actually has been terrific, his experience is invaluable and, and um I'm thankful that he actually was willing to re-up.
Same here, I know Dave has been on there for a long time and I know he's at East Province where he's over on that side doing all their sewer work. So bringing that experience here to West Warwick helps. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it.
Request from William Malloy for appointment of the planning board as an alternate member for term ending July twenty twenty-seven.
May I ask a question before that happens? So are, do people have to reapply and, and was that process gone through? We did have two candidates previously.
You did and um yes, because those applications were um voted down by the council, any candidate had to reapply. Um and I have speak, I did speak with both previous candidates and explained to them that.
And I will move the name of William Malloy to be appointed to the planning board.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? William's here, I know he gave his speech last time, um I think he'll do a good job on that board, so uh with that being said, any other comments?
For me, I, as I said to Mr. Malloy the last time, I had no reason to vote against him except what the wrong I felt was done to the other candidate at the time, so that's my only comment.
I have to recuse myself from this appointment due to an ethical, ethics board decision.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it. Congratulations, Mr. Malloy.
Thanks very much, thank you.
So the third or fourth or fifth time is the charm, is that, yeah.
Second.
Whatever.
Resolution declaring November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three a small business Saturday.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? We vote on this almost every year, I think it's Mrs. Wu who sends us the email um asking for that. That being said, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it.
Discussion action and consideration of reduction in parade detail fees for the Portuguese Holy Ghost Society.
Discussion started, I guess.
I guess I will uh bring it up, um I received a phone call from the president of the Holy Ghost. He was asking for a reduction, a rather large reduction and I kind of did exactly what you just did, I chuckled. But I told him I would bring forward um with, with the amount of police detail with the parade, they cut it down, they even cut out that section of Phoenix Avenue. As anybody who marched that day realized, wow, we don't have to go that extra forty-five minutes of marching. And he was hoping to keep his bill under, around ten thousand dollars, it's a little over twelve thousand, so I was looking for a thousand dollar reduction in that bill. A donation from the town of West Warwick based on the parade.
Who would make up the difference?
Hmm?
Who would make up the difference?
That would be us, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
We've, we've given it before, it's just, I'm, I'm bringing it before the council, so it's up to you guys, yay or nay, I'm just bringing it before you.
So what is it?
They're looking for a thousand dollar reduction on their bill, I think it's twelve thou, I had the bill, I, I didn't take it with me.
So would the bill be different each year?
So this is, this is unique and again, I, I don't know, I, I know in the past, I haven't been to the last two meetings, the last two parade meetings. I know we've, I, I've always said to them, if you have a budget of ten thousand dollars, let the police department know you have a budget of ten thousand dollars, that's it. They've, they've discussed private security on the grounds, they've done a lot of different ways, but we've always, as a town, pushed back and said, no, you can't do that. So they're like, okay, if we can't get private security on our property and the police department is doing it, can you help us out a little bit with some of that bill? Like I said, it was, they asked for a lot, larger request, but I said I would request a thousand, that's, that's my only request.
I don't know why the town would say they can't have private security on their private property, I don't understand that, but that's a whole different topic. Uh as far as this goes, I mean, Mary Beth and I were just, you know, trying to get eleven hundred dollars back from a guy investing over two million dollars in the town. You know, we want to just give away a thousand dollars. That just doesn't make sense to me, so.
I mean, I mean, that, that event does bring, I mean, I can't quantify the amount, but it does bring a lot of money to the town from people that are outside of West Warwick as well, it does bring money into the town.
Probably take many years to get over two million though.
But I'm not, I'm not comparing it, I'm not comparing it to the other project, I'm, I'm not comparing it to the other.
So they received a bill from the police department for twelve thousand dollars.
Correct, the officers had been paid, so financially speaking.
We're in the hole.
The police department, or depending on how it was done, the police department would either absorb that as a loss in a particular account. Or the town decides to move money from another account to the police detail account.
So they, they are going to pay, in your scenario, eleven thousand dollars, we're not forgiving, I mean.
Yeah, we're not forgiving eleven thousand.
We're, we're not forgiving.
If it.
My, my only concern with that, like. It, it is, it is.
Kind of do it for both parades.
We do what for both parades?
We've given credits on both, Oni, we've actually given free Oni God now, which is.
Saint Patrick's, is that what you're talking about, the second parade?
So again, he, I know Mike O'Connell from, has brought it before, in the council before, he's asked for reduction.
So actually, and I know the friendly sons of Saint Patrick's actually request money from the state, so that's something that they should consider doing at the Holy Ghost.
I'm not even sure if they do, I, I didn't ask, I was called, I was asked, I said I will.
It, it's a great event, I just, I'm just very leery of setting a precedent. If.
Twelve thousand twenty-one.
Nobody wants to be the bad guy, all right, but you know, I'll just.
I'm actually, I, I agree with you, I'm not sure that we want to do it, I, I mean, perhaps there are other ways that they can raise money, um but I'm not sure it should come from the town. We say no to other nonprofit organizations, we've made that clear because we were, we were doing that for a while and picking and choosing and I think we, we quelled that, we, we quieted that down, so that's a good thing, I don't know.
I, I, I don't feel, again, it has nothing to do with the event, it's about setting the precedent and I'm thinking way outside the box here, if someone came up to us and had struggled to pay their, their sewer bill for the year and they couldn't pay it. And can you help me out? Can you give, can you give me a break of, of the six hundred dollars that I owe on the sewer bill? It's going to be known, well, annual interest by the way, you know, so I, I don't, I, again, maybe I'm, I'm thinking way outside the box here, but it's a similar thing. You know, so I, I don't think I could vote for that.
No, and again, that's why I brought it before, so you're, I don't have to take a vote, I'll just take consensus, no?
I don't, no.
Yeah, sorry.
I, I would have said, yeah, I would have said yes.
Yeah.
Um, all right.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, that's.
No, I mean, I told him I would bring it as well.
In consideration of twenty twenty-four town council meeting schedule.
Move approval of the schedule as presented.
Second.
Moving seconded, any discussion? We have. It'll be good.
It's, you know, first Tuesday.
Yep.
I think the only alterations you'll see to the schedule is. I think the only alterations you'll see to the schedule is school vacations, which we usually avoid. So it's I've kept it in line with the way that you guys have done it.
November twelfth is the second Tuesday because of election.
You got it. I need to explain it. You already have it.
He's been here for a while.
Yeah. I might be a little busy on election day.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Uh, consideration of twenty twenty four sewer commission meeting schedule.
Move approval of the schedule as presented.
Second. Moving second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
I already fell asleep.
Just for a minute. Yep.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Um, update on crossing guard pay rate.
I put this on the agenda because I was asked. So I'm just going to explain it. It's come before us many times in public comment. Personally, I I'm going to stand by what I said the last time it came before us. I don't believe it's a county council issue. I do believe it's an issue and it should be resolved from the town manager down. But where do we stand and is it resolved?
So it it is still a pending project. It's been a collaborative effort between the school department and the town departments of the police and and human resources. We did sit down Karen and Joe, myself and Chief Levine and Councilman Williamson to talk about a lot of things because it's more than just the pay scale. It's grown into a little bit. So we're working on, the school department has provided the hours at the in in the school locations that they need that service. So now we're looking at the pay scale options, whether it's hourly, whether it's a day rate, what would work best and make most sense. But more importantly, we're working on a standard operating procedure that primarily being drafted by the police department, but will kind of include how we do our hiring, training, chain of command, disciplinary measures, who's a primary point of contact when there are issues and the outfitting and gear that they're provided and how to go about that. Essentially, it's a little a little more broad, but a little more inclusive. And we're hoping, you know, we just finalized the the hours we just received relatively recently. So I I would suspect that we should be able to work that out within the next few weeks. And again, I I'll provide an update, but I agree it doesn't need to be here. But since it's been a point of interest, once that's resolved, I'll distribute and inform you all of that, just for your own personal knowledge. Thank you.
It it will go a long way to clarify the confusion that exists because nobody knows why we do it the way we did it. Nobody understood any of that. So so that's why so that's why this will formalize that. It'll be perfectly clear and no one should have any questions.
Any other discussion on that?
It may be it will be taken care of and by January one, it'll be done.
Update on the Arctic gazebo.
I also put this on the agenda because it's come up to us many times, again, in in public comment. And I'm sure it's being worked on. I'm sure there's hopefully a plan in place because I'm not quite sure where the work, where we stand with the work, but bottom line is the fence is going to have to come down at some point. So although there's been no activity there now, there's a possibility that once the fences come down, that there'll be activity like there has been in the past. And hopefully there won't. But if there is, what's the plan? Because if not, it's going to come right back up here to the council and I think we have other things to do personally.
So that's a two-part question. First of all, the work that was done there, it's been thoroughly cleaned, painted. Some interior roof stuff repaired, the in the roof to the bathroom has been done. And some minor masonry work. There's still a little bit more that can be done, but it's beyond the equipment and expertise that we have in-house for those by other minor masonry. As far as reopening, it's the intent, I can't get the date, but probably a week from Friday, seventeen.
Is what you told me originally.
Is when we were planning to have the fence removed, scheduling to get the fences taken down. Parks and Rec has been doing some internal decorating while it's safe and they can put equipment in there, the scissor lift and in the bucket truck. So the fence will schedule to be taken down. As far as a plan moving forward, there are a couple of things that are have been bantered around. But from my own in public safety perspective, I'm sticking with what I said at that that last council meeting. Obviously, we the food service has stopped there and isn't coming back. It's being done somewhere else. You know, we're going to increase our sanitation removal and inspection there. We're going to enforce the dusk to dawn closure of of that property. It's a little easier now since daylight hours are a lot less. And then it's just going to be an increase of a town presence there. And again, that's a combination. Obviously, most of the burden falls upon the police department through periodic patrols. But a random time for our assignment of an off-duty person that will be assigned there at various times during the day to be supplemented by some other town employees that can help just take that pressure and burden off the police department, whether it's parks and recreation personnel doing routine or daily cleanings and inspection, whether it's the fire department's community paramedicine people stopping there to type their reports or engaging the people that are there, whoever they are, in doing blood pressure screenings or whatever. You know, they have an extensive amount of services that they can provide. And then obviously, you know, we don't want anyone doing any confronting of people that they're either either engaged in illegal or inappropriate behavior. They can summons the police if the the police not happen to be there. But again, as it stands right now, it's it's set up as a as a public park. We want to treat it like that. There, the chief has always been committed and his offices are always committed to strict enforcement of illegal activities and adjudicating those properly. Our biggest challenge remains on dealing with inappropriate behavior that's that's not illegal. And hopefully the increased presence of all those involved people as well as community members that step up and help out and want to be good witnesses and and call when they see something. Hopefully that will allow us to make it through this winter season, if you will. And so that that extra police presence, you know, we'll we'll set it up for a couple of weeks and then assess and see how we're doing and what is what's still needed or what can be modified.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions to mark on that?
Resignation of Mark Borgé as council representative, Ward five, effective November eighth, twenty twenty three.
I put this on the agenda.
We gotta we gotta hold it first before we even discuss it.
Move acceptance of the resignation with regret. With great regret.
Second.
Thank you. I want to thank, first of all, everybody in Ward five for supporting me over the many, many years I've run and been elected here. So I want to thank them first and foremost. From here on out, I'm going to take a page out of Councilman Lachartie's books. I don't just free speak and go down a whole bunch of rabbit holes. So I wrote it out and I'm just going to read it out. In our country, we have a system where the majority rules during elections and each community and or state gets to choose the type of leadership that determines its laws and policies. I was born and raised in Rhode Island and have disagreed with the left-leaning policies for as long as I have been paying attention. And I've worked over the last twenty years or so to bring some balance by running for office, speaking out in different ways. But the good people of this state prefer the direction we are going in. And I I am against the direction, but also respect it with all the people, so I am moving out of state. Some of the issues that are driving me out are the drug policies, including the legalization of marijuana, the treating heroin, cocaine, fentanyl and meth as insignificant drugs, even to the point of providing safe places for people to partake in them. These issues, in my opinion, create more mental illness, homelessness and increased crime in the communities. Another area is gun law, the gun law that made good law-abiding citizens into felons, that is, a high-capacity magazine law. I find it ironic that a person can have enough fentanyl to kill forty five hundred people and it's a misdemeanor. But if they possess a high-capacity magazine that they probably purchased legally, they are suddenly felons. I believe this law will eventually be deemed unconstitutional and be overturned. A major problem I have is the lack of respect for the U.S. and Rhode Island Constitution. I list listed just one a minute ago and have been others over the years, like the truck tolls. But during COVID, the state of emergency took away numerous rights in the name of safety, which was understandable in the beginning, but Rhode Island was one of the few states that stuck with stuck with it for all for the full three years. The legislature had the authority to stop all the extensions, but instead let the governor continue to subject the citizens with undue restrictions of our freedoms. These restrictions cause stress on our citizens, particularly the children, and cost some of their jobs. We heard some of the effects on the children tonight. The biggest issues, the biggest issue that has made me decide to leave the state is the taxpayer-funded abortions. I find it reprehensible that my tax dollars go to killing innocent babies. I also find it unbelievable that this law passed, even though Article one, Section two of the state constitution says, and I quote, "Nothing in this section shall be construed to grant or secure any right relating to abortion or the funding thereof." This, in my opinion, shows the law is a direct violation of the state constitution. I mention these issues because this is why I'm moving out of state. There is a lot about this town and state that I love and will miss. But these issues are weighing heavily on me spiritually, and from this council seat, there's little I can do. Because I care about this town, when it became more definitive that I was leaving, I started looking for someone to take my seat. According to the town charter, the town council has to appoint someone who is a registered Republican and lives in Ward five. I found four people that meet these requirements that I believe would serve the town well, and I asked them if they would be interested. One person declined and the other three stated they would be interested. I gave those names to a Republican town committee and the three candidates were interviewed. The committee chose Mark Dennison as the person they the person to take my seat after I resign. I am full support of Mark as my replacement. As to the process, as to how the replacement is done, the charter is silent to this, so this is uncharted territory, unintended. I tried to find a process for when Steve Lawton resigned from his seat, as language is the same for the for the council vacancy, but I could not find one. Sarah was able to find one for me yesterday, well, how it was done. So I thank you for that. But we see how the board of canvases is filled where there is a vacancy. There is similar language. It has to be a resident from West Wall or can remember if the same party is the person that vacated the seat. In this process, the town committee submit names and the council makes the appointment. Because I could not find a process, I assumed it would be done the same way. That is why I took the steps I took to find a replacement. Now, I want to thank this council for the last two plus years. We had had our differences, but I think we did our best to treat each other with respect, even when things became heated. I really enjoyed my time on this council. I I thoroughly have enjoyed it. I want to thank each and every one of you for that. The manager, Mark, I have always had respect for you as a police officer, a chief, and now the town manager. You are good at learning what you do not know, and your organizational skills are unbelievable. I don't know how you do it. I really don't. As well as your patience with this council, especially me, when I put out there, hey, you didn't do this, and there it is. My mistake. Sorry. So thank you. I want to thank the department heads for their hard work. I have had more contact with Jeff, Chief Levine, Chief Arone, and of course, Sarah over the years. And that's not to diminish any of the other department heads and the and the great work you do. They're just the ones I work the closest with. So I'm going to mention some stuff about each of them. Jeff, you and your guys work hard and are very responsive to the needs of the citizens. It's very impressive every time something is done. I I know for myself and I've heard from other council members, you put an issue out there, you it's taken care of as quickly as it possibly could be. So thank you. Chief Levine, I could not ask for a better police chief. This is coming from a police officer. I could not ask for a better police chief. You have the ability to balance your position while maintaining yourself as a police officer by being in the mix with your men and women. I see that balance. I hope I hope your members of your police department see it as well and respect you for it as much as I do. Most chiefs, they get into that office, they become more political and less police. And I see that balance in you and I I just have a lot of respect for that. Chief Arone, your demeanor and leadership skills are fantastic and your work within the community is impressive. You go way above and beyond what you need to do as a as a as a fire chief and thank you for that. And I and I have to thank your your fire department as well. The amount of times my neighbor across the street came right up to me one time and the other times that we've had letters sent to the council, the professionalism that they've shown in these tough, tough times, Al and his situation. You know, these tough times where family members are affected and their care is is appreciated, and that always starts at the top. So thank you. Sarah, you are excellent at your job and I appreciate all your help over the years. I could not ask for a a better clerk. I mean, the the ways I get lost looking through this system, like I looked and I looked and I looked for this. I called you yesterday. Could you see if there's something? And within a couple hours, you found it. And so thank you very much. This town has its issues, as all communities do. I am not resigning my seat and moving out of state because of these issues, but because of but because of the way this state is being run. So I'm resigning as of tomorrow, November eighth. I also know the grass is not always greener in other places. Now I might even come back. I don't know what the future brings, but for now, at least, have to try and not feel spiritually oppressed by a governing society that I disagree with. So again, thank everybody for your support over the last few years and and then some, and I appreciate your time.
Mark, I I just want to echo. It has been a pleasure. This is the second time I've worked with you on the council. I'll be honest, the second time's been the better of the two because it was tough times back then, right? It was definitely. But I wish you and your family the best of luck. Obviously, you're going somewhere a little warmer, so your winter's going to be a little different this year. And again, it's always been a pleasure of working with you. Like I said, we like you said earlier, we don't always see eye to eye, but we walk out of here and we can still talk and and figure out things, what's best for West Wall. So good luck to you and your family once again.
Thank you.
I'd like to reiterate that, too. I've gotten to know Mark on a more on a personal level as well. And Ward five has been very lucky to have him as a councilman. He's been he goes, I don't want to say overboard, but he puts the time in and there's definitely no question, and that's what you want. And it's been really nice, you know, working with you, even though we've disagreed a few different times and I'm right, you're wrong, as long as we get that, you know?
You're always wrong, obviously.
But seriously, it's really it's been really nice working with you the last couple of years. Thank you.
So that's the magic of it because we can disagree and we're going to disagree.
But things come with disagreements.
End of the day, we care about what happens to the people in West Wall. And we all, I think we all agree that that is the bottom line for anybody that sits here. So we will miss you. Yes, right. And I was nosy and called and asked you, and you actually said you were dying two days ago. So I don't know. That must not be true.
She called me because I had to hope I'm not out of line. Is everything okay? I'm like, they gave me a day to live.
Yes.
She goes, wow, you answered my phone call. I feel very, very honored.
Exactly right.
Yeah, I like what Jason said. I know we haven't we haven't always agreed up here on things, but you've always we've I feel like we've been respectful of each other throughout those disagreements. So good luck on going somewhere a little warmer.
Thank you.
In your new endeavor. Upcoming appointments, we'll go over and then we'll go right into public forums. I know. Oh, we don't have to.
Yeah.
He's just not going to show up. All right. With that being said, all in favor?
With regret, aye.
Opposed?
Choice. I'm opposed to it, but.
If we go to two, what happens?
Thank you. You told me you were leaving tonight, so yes.
I am leaving tonight, yes.
Good luck, Mark.
Thank you. Thank you. I didn't vote, I abstained.
Okay.
Upcoming appointments, Sewer Use Board to review appointment to fill a vacancy as an alternate member for a three-year term. Sewer Use Board to review appointment to fill a vacancy as a regular member for a three-year term. West Wall Housing Authority, appointment or reappointment for five-year term expiring November twenty twenty-seven. Planning Board has been filled. Tax Assessment Board to review appointment to fill a vacancy for a three-year term. Public Forum.
Um, a couple of things before we get started. I just received two thank you letters. One from the family of Mark Amroll, Nancy, Nicole and Kelly. Thank you very much for the beautiful plant and fruit basket for the family. They said it was gratefully thoughtful. And the same thing from the Manny family, uh, Solanga Manny. Santa, thank you for our flowers for Fred Manny, who's Matt Manny's dad. And I also received a letter, I think we all have, but I'll have Sarah put it on the agenda for correspondence from the Republican Town Committee. Public comment.
Tammy Collins, eighty-five Crestwood Drive and Chair of the West Wall Republican Town Committee. We wanted to express our sincere regrets on losing Mark, but congratulations on Florida, so that's wonderful. And the letter you guys are going to reference next meeting, I'm assuming. But we also wanted to say that we interviewed the candidates that Mark brought to the town committee. And we spent a lot of time meeting with them and then deliberating and we all agreed on Mark Dennison as our choice for Ward Five Town Council replacement. Mr. Borgia.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Okay.
How, because it hasn't, this has never come up before.
Okay.
Um, but it's a question, because we can't talk privately, because it's a void, it's a quorum, right? It's a rolling form. So how does, how does this work? Because this is never come up.
I, I have, I have that right here, vacancies. Just vacancies, a vacancy shall exist in the town council if a member dies, resigns, ceases to meet the qualification for membership, is convicted of a felony or a crime of moral, moral perpetuity and has exhausted all appeals from said conviction, or is absent from four consecutive months of council meetings, unless such abstinence are excused by a majority vote of the whole council membership, with reasons therefore stated at the time in appearing in the journal of the meeting from which the council member was excused. Any vacancy in membership of the town council, which occurs less than two years prior to the next general election, shall be filled by the town council until the next general election. When the office shall be filled for the unexpired term thereof, provided that the person selected to fill said vacancy shall be a member of the same political party as the person whose position they are selected to fill. In the event that the council member was unaffiliated, the council may appoint any qualified elector who is unaffiliated or a member of any recognized political party. And that's something that was just added, we, this council had passed.
No recognition, actually, based on the fact that not having a special election.
So that's, that's where it is, so.
Right.
Um, what we did for Steve Lawton when he resigned and uh, Mark and Sarah kind of refreshed my memory. We did put out a um, basically you have until a certain timeframe to put your letter of um, consider, consideration or interest. And then the council, actually I think the school committee also did some interviewing on that one. Um, there was two candidates that actually put in, one withdrew their name uh, like a week before. And then we, we appointed um, Angela Goldberg, yes. So that's, that's the only other one that I've had experience with.
Where do we put, I don't know. If I, but if I may, this is not on the.
It's not, but I've just, I'm giving everybody here.
For informational purposes, you can shoot, this is an appointment process that you guys can, since there's no bylaws as to how to do it, you can do whatever you want. So if you want to have interviews, you can. There's really not a recommendation process by either the bodies or any independent, so uh, the Republican Party has already provided you with information. There might be others out there that might be interested too, that Mark perhaps didn't speak to.
Would they go through the Republican Party?
They don't, no, no, they don't have to. All, all they have to do is be a Republican.
No.
So they, they could send it out, like sending a resume in to Sarah.
And then you guys could decide if you get one or if you get nine, you, you could decide how you want to handle.
So do we want to have an item on the next agenda so we can have a longer, uh, more thorough discussion about this? Okay, so however Sarah used to fit to put it on there, we can have a longer discussion to see what process we want to take. And um, I, I will, I will say, I know we haven't got a few, hold on one second. We've had a few famous people here tonight, Mayor Allen Fong, who just left. But former councilman Jeru, I know you're back there and I'm going to put you on the spot. When you were on the council, there was no um, appointments, right? There was, yours was a special election.
I had won that mid, midterm election.
Thank you. And Mark, and Mark had a special election.
Well, like I said, I look at the, uh, actually I said, when I read, the board of canvass is very important body. And traditionally, it's been whoever leaves, that, that town committee would present names to the council or a name and the council would appoint that person. So without having anything like Mr. Williamson just said, there's nothing in writing, you do whatever way you want. That's the way, I'm hoping that this council will do it, is take the recommendation, not only of the person leaving the seat, but the town committee as well, because it's supposed to be somebody who represents the Republican Town Committee and, you know, as a Republican. So I'm hoping that the council takes that into consideration and because um, there's always something important coming up and I don't mean to, you know, make it seem like this is, you know, your end-all body, because it's not, but there's a lot, it, it should really have five people, so I'm hoping that this process is, is filled quick sooner rather than later. Uh, so to wait two weeks to put it out for discussion, and then if you do use the same process and you're looking at two more weeks for applications and then two more weeks for an appointment, and it just seems like a very long time to, to move out when there's a very qualified uh, person sitting in the audience today who wants to do this job. He uh, he, he is very desirous to do this job and, and you know, that's who I would recommend and that's who the Republican Town Committee recommends. So I'm just hoping that the council at least considers that.
Thank you, Mark.
Uh, there's no doubt we would take that into consideration. I personally will. I do think that we run afoul by not putting it out to the entire public to let them know that there is a position available. I, I think we're, we open ourselves up to criticism for not doing that. I really don't.
And, and I do understand that.
Yeah.
But it has to be a Republican.
From what vibe?
Yeah, so I, I, I agree. You've gone through a process, but there may be another Republican out there that you don't.
And I completely agree, but does that have to be put out and can that be put out now or does it have to wait for two weeks to be on the agenda?
And again, and again, not, not to, not to, you know, delay this, but it's really not appropriate to be discussed. It should be, it should be on the agenda. Everybody can throw out their ideas and then a consensus can be reached.
Someone, if we, if we get to that point, appoint someone, have someone say, well, wait a minute, you didn't go through the right process or you know what, you had your mind up, made up already. So I, I just think that we.
There is no process, so they can't make that.
Yeah.
So you guys aren't going to put it out for two weeks though, because it's not an agenda item.
We're going to have to put it on the agenda.
And then it'll put out in public.
But it'll be a short timeframe.
Okay.
I mean, it's pretty public right this second.
Now it is. The word is certainly out.
Right, and I hate to have, you know, we all have our council people and we appreciate all of you. It's, I feel like Ward Five not having a councilman for that period of time is unfair.
And I, and I will speak on John D'Amico's behalf. When he resigned, it was a couple of months and I fielded all of Ward Five's calls for him. And anything that he received, he's, or phone calls on his cell phone were sent to me. I don't want to do it to Ward Five. Got a lot of my plea too.
Alan Plaza, five Robin Lane and a resident of Ward Five. I'm going to miss Mark. I used to drive him crazy. Think I bothered you? He uh, was on the receiving end of more calls than you can imagine. However, as a resident of Ward Five, I would recommend that on the next agenda, you have discussion slash appointment of a Ward Five councilman, okay? For the simple reason, I don't want to go a month or two without a councilman that I can call up and harangue, okay? It's that simple. You, it, you know, you can come up with anything you want. You can try sleight of hand. The town committee has chosen someone. I feel very confident that he will represent not only Ward Five, but the citizens of the entire town. I think he'll do an outstanding job. And I just want to pass that along to you. I think you need discussion slash appointment. You don't have to do it at the next meeting, but it gives you the opportunity to appoint if someone doesn't come forward. And I'll end it there on that subject. However, uh, Ed Jeru hasn't been here in a long time. We used to have uh, we used to have uh, our differences of opinion and I would stand up here, just like I do with you. And I would have to count on reporters to put out information to the citizens of the town. And I've said it over and over again, Ed, I thank you for this camera system and for the ability to speak directly to the taxpayers and residents of this town. When I come up here, they know I'm not talking to them, because they're not listening. But I know the taxpayers are, because the residents are attending these meetings more often. They're commenting on social media. So Ed, my sincere thanks for this, even though we don't have a podium yet, but uh.
I was hoping that would be here before.
I was, I was, I was, Mark will hit it next time. But again, thank you so much, sir.
Any other public comment? None? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Anybody online? Nope. All in favor?